Pastor Morgan, tell all of the members to have an invitation, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you in all humility, acknowledging that we are not perfect people, nor are we a perfect nation. So we seek your forgiveness, that you may hear our prayers and heal our land. As we get ready to celebrate our nation's independence next week, we thank you for the blessings that you have given us and the freedoms that we cherish so dearly in this nation and that you have endowed us with certain unalienable rights, among which are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for making us a name among the nations because of your great name. And we thank you for our independence as a nation and the freedom to worship you. We thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today, and we thank you for the many abundant blessings you have given to us. We thank you for life itself, for the health we need to fulfill our callings, for your strength that sustains us, and for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for the freedom to call upon you and for loving us with your grace and your mercy. So we ask you to guide us, oh Lord, with your mighty strong hand. Help us to trust in you because you are our God and our lives and our times are in your hands. Make your face to shine upon us and save us for your mercy's sake. Let us not be ashamed to call upon you, and we ask you to instruct us and to teach us in the way which we should go. Guide us with your vision and your counsel. You've told us in your word that you have given us governing authorities to promote peace and order and justice. And so we pray for these various officials here today and ask you to give them wisdom to govern amid the various interests and the issues of our times. Give them a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a hope for justice and righteousness, a confidence in what is good and pleasing, the ability to work together in harmony, and a personal peace in their lives and a joy in the task before them. We pray, Lord, for the agenda set before them, and we ask you to give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around Coffee County. We give thanks for the many who have secured and maintained our freedoms by defending and dying for this great nation. And so we ask for you to make the faith of our forefathers real to us and help us, Lord, to remain one nation under God indivisible. May you bless this country and this county. May you bless this state and this great nation that we call home. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Morgan. At this time, all this commission, Carrie Farif, you will please.
To reply, United States of America and to the Republic, for what sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have our vote, all commissioners, wait, please. David Orr is working. I had a homework and talk is working well, and Kim got married last weekend, so I guess we will excuse her then. Eighteen present. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the agenda, but I need to add to the agenda tonight, item under 10G, an audit committee report. So I had item 10G as an audit committee report. Do I want you to approve? I'd like to add two things to the agenda, too.
Okay.
H would be to amend the rule solid waste budget, and I would be for discussion for a hiring freeze across the board, except for emergency personnel. Do I amend rule solid waste budget?
Yes, sir.
And I would be without a hiring freeze across the board, except for emergency personnel. If eight to July 118, then I can put the question you wanted to. Can you heard those additions? G, audit committee report, H to amend the rule solid waste budget, and I discussion for hiring freeze next year, except in emergency situations. Correct. Okay. Now, motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mayor Shelton, second by Jackie Duncan. Discussion. Chair recognizes, President.
Mr. Morris, I'm not sure about the solid waste budget, but the hiring freeze, which essentially, I think I know where you might be going with this, which I'm probably fine with, but I'm not sure why we don't address it when we look at the budget resolution and either amend it there as part of that process. So because we don't have a drafted resolution about that in front of us, and so I just have some difficulty with it without the resolution go along with it.
I just think we need to discuss that. Some of the things that you and Mark Kelly said in budget finance or in treaty, if we find areas that don't need replacements, they don't need a replacement. These ladies and gentlemen back here in uniforms, they need a raise. In some way, we gotta find it. And if five people do get hired back next year, that could contribute close to $300,000 of income that we have coming in, and it could be spread amongst them. They need to be taken care of. They're gonna get step raises, but no raises. And that's just one way that I thought of. Try to find it. And I don't know if that needs to be the resolution, to be brought forward legislatively or whatever, but it's just thinking outside the box.
I think it's gonna come up as we discuss the budget. So it might be long resolve before we get down to it.
That's good. And I want to suggest, and I think commissioners, you would please speak up when, you know, you address someone and make sure your button is on. Okay, so press your button. Do we have a motion, second? Other discussion? Let's go for motion, please. Motion is to approve the agenda.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
Any.
Eighteen yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'll have asked for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Spear. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Technology's great when it works properly. I don't know, Amy's head folks seem to look at him to make sure we get it right.
Number seven, resolutions of memorial sympathy and commendation. Seven A, resolution 2018-19, resolution in honor and recognition of Joanna Lewis, deceased, for her devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Joanna Lewis earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a Coffee County historian, serving on the Coffee County Historical Society for 49 years, joining shortly after it was founded. During her time with the Historical Society, she served in all officer positions available within the society. She served as a Coffee County historian after the passing of her husband Jess Lewis in 2017, who served a Coffee County historian for 20 years. Whereas her tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commends Joanna Lewis for her outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Joanna Lewis receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record passed in so order this 26th day of June 2018.
We certainly want to thank Ms. Lewis and Ms. Lewis for their service to the county. Is anyone here, did I represent the Lewis family? Again, we want to thank the Lewis's for their outstanding service all the years. Do we have motion to approve the resolution? Motion by Diane Argraves, second by Jackie Duncan. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. And again, thank the Lewis's for their outstanding service to this county for all these many years. Eighteen yes.
Seven B, 2018-20, resolution in honor and recognition of Leona D. West for her devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Leona West served as deputy in the Coffee County trustee's office for 34 years. Whereas her tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commends Leona West for her outstanding service to Coffee County. Be it further resolved that Leona West receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record passed in so order this 26th day of June 2018.
The Wests are here, and she's here, and we thank you for your dedicated service for all those many years. Thank you very much. And there being none. At this time, I'll request a motion to approve. Tina Morris, second by Missy. Discussion. Let's vote, please. Eighteen yes. Again, thank you, Leona, for all the service over these many years.
There being none. There number eight, elections, appointments, and confirmations. Eight, eight to eight, notaries.
I would like to make a motion to approve the notaries listed in our agenda.
Motion by Russ Brinkin, second by Brooke Mary. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. While you're voting, Leona West, we have is how did you put up a charm? Appreciate your service.
Number nine, finished B, business. There being none. Number 10, new business. 10A, school budget amendments.
If there's no objection to do anything to gather budget amendments, you're packing, approved by budget committees.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mayor Shelton, second by Amy Morris. Discussion. The core data thoroughly about budget budgets. Discussion, there being none, let's vote, please.
10B, budget amendments. I'm sorry. That took care of me. All right. 10C, jail medical contract.
As you know, the person is commissioned. We've been in that, has been reviewed through budget finance extensively. And it's time to have motion to approve the jail medical contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Bryan, second. By Artie Cunningham. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Second question. Was this contract bid out this year?
Yes, sir. No, it wasn't. I stand ready.
Okay, because at the last budget meeting, I was told that it was bid out when the question was asked. Why was it not bid out? Well, I think as a commission, and what we owe to our taxpayers is to always bid these out. This is the third year, and this shouldn't have been bid out. This is $1.10 million that's coming out of the sheriff's budget that he has no control over. So I think that this, something like this needs to be bid out anytime that we can't bid it out. And I know the person is a, it's a commission, but we owe to our taxpayers to bid this out because there's some things in here that I see that I don't agree with, and I will not be voting for it.
I just would like to make a statement. I agree with Stephen's somewhat. I have a problem with the sheriff has nothing to travel over his medical staff and his contract.
This medical group has been very professional. They do it all over the southeast. We've had very, we've had no problems with them. They've been straightforward upfront. It's still cheaper than when the jail did it by itself. When we had the jail with our internal nurses, we were spending $80,000, $90,000 a month or more because we were constantly going to their emergency room. That totally saves. And the cost per inmate is very reasonable and backed down a professional job. You can't please all the people all the time. We have very, very few complaints. I haven't heard any from the sheriff. Have you seen you guys in line, sheriff?
I don't. I have complaints in the morning.
It's very common when people don't get the medical care, that family things they need to get, and the ones that complain. But that's just why, you know, you can't please all the people all the time. But these people are very professional and have been very interactive with us to try to do a professional job.
Mr. Chairman, also with the medical understand that QCHC is doing our billing? Is that correct? At a 15% rate? Who's doing our billing? So there is no, so QCHC is not doing any of that?
That was discussed committee to see if the major medical bills, if they could get a better discount than what I was getting because it's becoming more difficult to get $200,000 medical bills negotiated with the medical bills and the continues. I've struggled with that of last year, not getting discounts they were previously. So we did discuss if we did look at that, how much would it cost us, but that is nowhere in this contract.
Oh, I understand that. Okay.
Rush.
One important part of this contract, and it is a three-year agreement, but there's a 60-day, no-call determination by either party to come out of this agreement. So if we are dissatisfied, dissatisfied with it, 60 days notice that if we can let it out and get anybody else who wants it, that's a further condition to have.
Question.
The main increase in this contract, just so everybody's aware, at the chairman, the CEO of QCHC, they both requested from Percy and budget finance to add a full-time mental health doctor and to go with the EMR system, which is the electronic medical records, which is the major cost. The only increase in this contract based over the past year is 1.8% for what he called a medical CPI, the simple price of it. I don't know exactly what that was, why, or anything like that. But very, very small increase for QCHC and other increases were what they requested.
As a federal increase, CDI increase. And I'm so glad that in this contract, we now have a mental health professional in it, which is really needed in their, in their operation. That perhaps save us a lot of lawsuits potentially. Commissioner Argraves.
I just have a question. I know we have to have the medical part of it, but why does the medical in the sheriff's department budget, if he has no say-so unit whatsoever? If it's his budget, he's responsible for this amount of money in the budget, he should have a say-so, or it should be had its own line item out of his budget. I was just wondering why it's in the sheriff's department budget, he has no say-so.
Here in Congress, we're living.
I would just say this. Sheriff has any control over that money. If the sheriff doesn't want it, it's in his jail. He has the right to say so. If it doesn't feel like it, he might through, he may prepare the thing he needs, he has to say so. Yes, he does have say so. So when he says that he knows to have a say so, I think, and I'm not trying to speak for him, but QCHC does everything. Used to, he had a person in his office where he was full-time making decisions on the cost of it. I think we've taken that liability off the sheriff, which is better for this county and helps us with lawsuits. The other part of that is QCHC is responsible for those lawsuits. They're still named, but they still, they represent us. That's a huge factor for this contract, is to take that liability, some of it off the sheriff. He's always losing. But QCHC is a professional medical company that has a professional lawyer who's there to represent us. And, you know, there's a fault, but, you know, that's what they did. Definitely did. And Bob has looked over this contract, you know, this is probably one of the best contracts that we have ever presented. And, you know, I'll just say, I thought they did at least.
We'd much rather have that liability on them than on them.
To answer the question I have, where else can we put it? It's in the jail. I mean, it's, it comes out of county courts. It doesn't really matter. Yes, it's an increase in the budget, but the $300,000 increase of prior year, that $300,000 is a testament of year to year. That's for outside medical costs. It always goes up or down. So for next year, the fact that they put $500,000 in there, that's based on extra incomes. That's, it could have come in at 300, it could have come in at a million, we never know. We had an extra $380,000 this year for cancer patients that had to give in there. On top of that, we have a liability at a major hospital that, you know, the bill was over $260,000. Remember, that had to pay $146,000. So because of that increase this year, if we not have those three or four end stamps, we would still contain the budget.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the contract. I know Mr. Hussey's looked at it because we talked about it in caucus last night. It's just, that's a big amount added to a budget that most people aren't aware of, that that's a big part of that budget that we're looking at.
Agreed.
My understanding, I have a little contract. It pretty much. But if you have a problem with it, then you could, you could come to Percy, we can go budget financing. That was my point.
Mr. President, yes.
Our brilliant here for the compensation says that this $100,000 valuation value is based on the jail population, 400 inmates a living in. And if it exceeds 435, then they go into negotiations for more money. What if, let's say our court systems change their ways and start sending fewer people to the jail?
Which we're working on.
Would that not, would it break off the, I don't see it. I'm just thinking, if we're paying the 400 inmates, and they're on charge of $435, if we drop down to 300, shouldn't we be paying less? Shouldn't there be language in that cover?
Rush.
I agree with Mr. Hunt. I think we could look at a provision there. But I want to point out, the last contract with this company three years ago, and it had a number of like 285, 300, it was a low number of two, seven, that had that provision that it exceeds like three-something, they could charge the county more. This company never did implement that surcharge by 10%.
For two years.
They didn't fit on the third year.
They did?
Yes, because, because we started hitting 350, 360.
Okay, but for two years, they didn't implement it. So it was some benefit of, but I think if, if anybody believes that, bridges or something, we could have a population that goes down. But we can always hope. But we can always hope. But I think they would give you a number to drop down to 350 or 300. I think this company would put a provision in to reduce costs.
Andy, can you check on that? Good question. They put all of that population down to 350 or lower?
Yeah, I just want to say that here in a little bit, we're going to be discussing the budget. And I know a lot of the language could be on the jail. With the sheriff's not having any control over this, and Andy, I'm not questioning, you know, anything that you do, but I think that with this, I think this should be, should have been bitted out and that the sheriff should have a say on this. Because I don't feel like, from the people that I've talked to, I don't feel like they have been transparent enough with the sheriff and sheriff's department. And I think that there needs to be more transparency there with QCHC and our sheriff's office.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you for your discussion. This time was...
Mayor, I think you might want to clarify a motion in front of the contract, but we certain that the revision is put in there for a similar rate reduction. Makes up, right there, 430 plus the...
435.
So if it goes down to 365, there should be a reduction in every 35 inmates.
Variation.
Variation reduction.
Whoever made the motion did amend their motion to put a provision there for reductions. Down to 365. Yes, I'll see. Okay.
I accept.
So the motion has been amended, do have a provision there, but down to if the population fall below 365, have a provision to amend that right there. Okay. Any other discussion?
That put in the motion. That put in the motion.
Part three.
You're actually voting on the end and did part of the light and the crackback. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the sheriff, is your, what Mr. Jones said, is that your opinion of that? Or are they transparent with you? Does he have any problems?
How would I communicate with your ladies more? I've seen them once a year and that's during contract.
Then you, I mean, will they meet with you or is there a problem?
Sheriff, please set up.
If Sheriff, I'd like to...
He was at the purchasing meeting when we discussed that. You were there.
And I believe in this contract. It also states that accordingly, to...
I'll bet if you ask him, he'll think you are.
I'd like to say about every three, four months. And I understand Dr. Banks is the CEO, he's not our chief doctor. So we want to see Dr. Banks more than Jim Doctor.
Andy, if you'll set it up and have someone to be quarterly with the sheriff.
It don't have to be a contract. I think just when we go back to them, this request to them that we need, that they need the sheriff, whoever they want, that they like to be quarterly.
What is it? Andy, can you hear this since I can't?
If the state's under 1.15 meetings, QCHC representatives will meet in accordance with schedule agreed to by the sheriff or the Coffee County Purchasing Commission and QCHC with the sheriff or the Coffee County Purchasing Commission concerning for citizens within the jail, any proposed changes in healthcare related procedures are only matters, but any pardon needed is necessary in case of a quell. So, Andy, you said it?
Andy, would you hear it? I can't. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Chris, go please. And Andy, correct or wrong, I think in discussion this year, we found out that the number of possible companies like this has decreased, or I think there's only three left, two or three left. So we don't have many to look at. Some of them got out of the business because of high costs and practice coverage and so forth. Let's go please.
Q. Resolution to Dev. 1921. Resolution to acquiesce compensation for the appointment by the juvenile judge as a part-time juvenile magistrate.
This request was submitted by Judge Rock. What they're doing, Coffee County is now a part of a, a safe baby court. And we're only one of six counties in the state that is being, has that opportunity to participate in that. And that will be funded, he's requesting a magistrate to help in that regard. And compensation will be $25,000 a year payable monthly. And that grant will cover the cost of that provision for four years. And if it's not approved, then it's all, you know, it's grant when it runs out, it's already worked and it's all protected. When that request came from Judge Rock, there'd be no net cost to the county other than some new grant there. That grant will be funding the provision of a magistrate to assist in his operation there in the jail. That's good, Andy, court.
And the motion that we approve the compensation for the appointment of a juvenile judge as a part-time juvenile magistrate, they will open it forward.
Thank you, Audrey. Do you have a second to motion? Second by Commissioner Big Board, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, you know, one provision of this is that approval would automatically terminate the completion of the grant first. So I think, you know, we are recognizing and juvenile judges recognize here, we're not looking at continuing to fund the issue if those grant fund monies run out. And my understanding is that we're one of maybe four or five counties.
Six counties.
Six. Six that are receiving this grant from the state. And I think it's a positive thing for us and over there at the court system. Over the grant has been reviewed, but we're not committed to it beyond the four to grant.
That's great. Rush.
In talking to our budget director on this, if we can honor the motion, but the magistrate that is named here, it's supposed to be a member of the bar, so that would be an attorney. It would seem like it would, for administration purposes, that this magistrate should be a professional contract service or not a compensated employee even on a part-time basis. So it would be what I call a 1099 contract service and not a W-2. If we can work that grant to be that way, it certainly would ease the administration of the grant to do so.
Rush, that's my understanding of what he discusses. And that's a fee that will go to the one he's going to appoint. The one that he's got in mind, he's affiliated with a firm in Oklahoma. And I don't know how they'll handle it, they'll probably just, it'll come in like a fee to that firm. I guess someone like, my thing is when I get a, I get a payment and it goes into the office, it's kind of the same thing. She doesn't take anything out of me, she couldn't be taking anything out on this magistrate.
And that's fine, but the wording of the resolution deal determines compensation versus, in that term, obviously generally means W-2 versus compensation in a professional circus man. So I just hope that's his outlet for a quarter.
But that's, that's the intention, I would call it, it needs to be.
Other comments or discussion? Give it off this phone, go please.
10A, Resolution 201822. A resolution making appropriation for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Coffee County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019.
Mr. Gobie, do we have a motion to prove this resolution to be on the floor for discussion? No motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to put appropriation for various funds on the floor for discussion.
Have a second.
Living, I can get them all open in a little bit here. I don't think anyone is in favor of a tax increase and this discussion stopped there and the vote was taken, this motion, I believe, would fail, which would be the right action to take. So we got a $813,000 budget shortfall that we need to figure out because the eight cent increase, that's what we're dealing with, $813,000. And there's no easy solution to this. I'm going to start off, and this would be coming up, because I have a feeling this is going to fail tonight, we're going to have, hopefully a great discussion and we'll rework this over the next couple of weeks and bring it back in July. We hopefully, some kind of budget that does not have a tax increase. That is my hope. One thing we can look at is we're comfortable with the ending fund balance for the county. This budget proposal ends up $2,460,000 as a fund balance, which is the white overall level B. But I think this county, I want to call it, worked, survived with a fund balance somewhere in that 2,001 range. So I certainly would propose to look at reducing this proposal by three cents and that would bring the fund balance as proposed down to 2,001, which is, would make the fund balance tough, but little. So that's just one thought to throw out to my fellow commissioners on this. That leaves us still $500,000 or something thousand short. The only other way is certainly look at, on that $500,000, is the larger departments of the county. And I had just kicked around whether every department under $500,000 take a 1% reduction in their budget. If it's over $500, a 2% reduction in their budget. If it's over $1 million, a 4% reduction in the budget. If you work the math for all those departments, you will come up with $500,000 something thousand. Now that's just across the board. Everybody takes some pain, but proportions is the size of their department. That will get a budget balanced without a tax increase. So I'm just throwing that out as an idea. Would like to get somebody to second it and get through it.
Rush is part of the discussion on that. I always have to go since I'm on the ambulance authority, I have to take it on. The ambulance authority in the proposed budget has already taken on $125,000 in expense without the one and a quarter cent in tax revenue coming across. So we've already eaten $125,000.
Mark, what I'm proposing, it would hit the EMS fund. Okay, this is general fund, Mark. Okay.
Okay, I want to, I want to make sure that that was clear.
I would like you to offer some reduction out of the EMS department.
Everyone knows that, this is the, my own personal, I have not represented them. I have no problem with closing the ambulance authority and letting each city build on their own and establishing a rural-only ambulance service that will take care of the rural side. And I think that that would be something that's workable and then, but it just simply transfers where the costs are coming from. And I'm sure, as you know, the ambulance has done a pretty good job over the last few years. And we went from having deficits to having some fund balance that we could actually have the money available to pay for three or four months of operations until the tax revenues start coming in. And that's absolutely essential. And that's, you said the 2.1 billion, I think was your number. I really think you got to have 2.4 billion. Otherwise, you're juggling and juggling and juggling all the time. You have to have a reasonable thing. And if anything pops up, $300,000 gets eaten up pretty darn quick. So that's why, my number's 2.4, but that's just my number, like your number's 2.1.
Mariana, the other night in budget finance, you said you thought we could make it on 2.1. I know it's been high.
Right, I mean, we will have to be careful with the expenditures that come in before pretty much December. We wouldn't be able to pay for any large items until then. We'd have to wait until then. Just have to watch it really close and the courts just have to understand.
But we'd have to, some people would have to wait until December, but we could operate, make payroll.
Probably taxes coming in December. So that's where cash flow really appears.
And I don't know if throwing this out now is the right time, and it won't be the savior for sure. It would at the end if every department froze their hiring, just to see what you could operate on and see what accumulated over the next couple of years. Tough savings. Some departments may not be able to make it, some may be able to do that too. I don't know, I don't run those departments. And some may need everybody that they have. But that hiring freeze for somebody to study, come back and focus on finance for somebody to approve that person, might make us a little bit more efficient. And I'm not saying anybody's laying around or anything, but there's, people seem to think that there's a lot of inefficiency in our government. That's one way to address it. And I don't know, Rush, if you're taking 4% off the sheriff's budget, if the jail medical goes over, we still have to eat that, right? I mean, like Andy was talking about with heart attacks and stuff, that could come up. So even if we cut it and it hurts, it's going to come out fine.
And Mr. Morris, that's one reason that I pushed for a 2.4 instead of 2.1. I think you have to have that margin.
On the hiring freeze, to announce a hiring freeze is, is one of those other words that June 30th, if any, if a employee leaves July the 4th... that, June 30th, if any, if employee leaves July the 4th, that employee would not be replaced in a, or non-emergency staff or staff, without going through some proof. But, there's no way, and that's maybe a good concept, but I don't think it's hard to quantify it, because we don't know anyone that's, we might know some people that are planning on leaving, but, but I don't know how you budget for that.
Oh, there wouldn't be a budget for that issue. It's just something that going forward, it would accrue to the next fund balance, or to the next year, and people became more and more efficient, then you have money to give these ladies and gentlemen back here. You know, the revenue and our expenditures have gotten many, but they need to be taken care of too, and that's, if, if, if one office can run with four instead of five, and you figure in their benefits, fifty-five, you do that five times, you're at $4 million. And that's not, that's why I say it's not gonna be this year, but it's something that could go forward. And, and I'm not saying cut everybody to the bone, or we're standing outside in a parking lot waiting on their tags, or a trustee's office to pay their taxes, because we sure won't come pay the taxes. And I guess it would be until the public rebelle, they don't wanna wait.
So, I got it, so it's a potential savings.
Yes, for the future.
For the, for the.
It's not a little bit our silver bullet for this at all, it's just something that could accrue money over, you know, a given period of time, and, and it may not work at all.
Mr. Mayor, just clarification, I mean, discussing the budget ultimately, they're going to lead to the discussion of the tax rate. The certified, just a clarification, the certified tax rate is the rate by which the county as a whole would receive the same amount of revenue as last year prior to a real crisis, is that correct? As to what the certified tax rate is?
Yes.
So, on a personal level, my commercial property went up 48% in the period, and rural residential property went up something like 20 something percent. So, I, you know, add the certified revenue to the total, so I'm curious, is anybody receiving a valid pocket reduction if the certified tax rate is adopted? Is anybody saying that out of the essential?
Well, if your assessment went up less than 12%, you would actually get a lower tax rate next year.
I think if 11% gets, gets swapped.
100% you should be the same, but somehow, if your property didn't get assessed up, you would get actually a lower tax bill.
Mr. Mayor, if I understand it correctly, there are, I'll just say several neighborhoods in my district, and that we could have a smaller tax bill.
Somebody said, the mayor's saying that we have added 12%.
It's not as fast as quick. Very close to 12%.
I don't think that's the case.
That is per the tax assessment. Obviously, with that, some property didn't, you know, they had to read that, they weren't, they didn't come up with 12%. So, as I said, they should get a slight tax.
Also, a clarification, we have a motion on the floor with a second made by Commissioner Free, that, is that correct?
I, no.
No.
You, you thought that was my idea?
You was hoping somebody would make that.
I was just waiting for more discussion, and we were on, and, and, obviously, I would make that as a motion, but I was hoping there was somebody else who could do it better either.
Right. Well, clarification, Andy, this really works, and I can hear it, and the, so, it's really strong. Is that better? Okay, just so people have an idea, out of our total budget, if you take courts, if you take anything related to law enforcement, probation, all of those things, the sheriff's department, the DA, anything, that's 55% of the county budget, if you will exclude schools.
Other discuss?
Well, when we looked at this, it's obvious we've got to do something, and obviously, the jail was the biggest cost. A lot of that is still increases, because that's the largest department other than the schools. So, that affects the man, and certainly the mental, because you've got more numbers there. But by law, we have to have a jail, but by law, we don't have to have an annex. The jail is a necessity, the annex is not. So, if we, if we've got to cut it down, to me, the annex, up until a couple of months ago, was only running nine or 10 people through there anyway. It would help the sheriff with his overall personnel numbers to be in one building. I know it would affect real solid waste, it would affect the work, because the sheriff says he can't let workers go out in jail. But the annex is not a necessity, so we could cut that, that's $513,000, that would make a big hit in this whole thing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
It's not gonna save you that much money. You've got, I mean, it's, it's the overflow, or you're, if we didn't have it now, we would be well over, no, we're what, $435,000?
We'd be right there. Right there.
We got an 86. Go on. 86, 70, 80. Well, I, but the ones that are in the annex, they're getting two for one, you work a day, that counts as two, you're reducing their numbers, doing that way. Your real solid waste is in turn, will have to hire people in order to keep up with your litter pickup and all those grants that we're doing. If we don't do that, then we start losing that. You cut out the workouts, you're not gonna save you a bunch of money, it's not gonna save you that lineup, you can forget that, that's not saving that much money. It's going, it's gonna cost you no longer. People are gonna then put pressure on the sheriff, let people out of my jail, which he is totally against, I support him on that. He's told me some of the problems that goes over that, we don't need to start doing that, we don't need to put pressure on him to do that. And I've heard people say, oh, he'll do it, he'll let them out, but if it's gonna be the problem that he says, we don't need to do that to him. So, you're not gonna save that lineup by closing that, that's not a cut and dry thing that you're playing, it's gonna do.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, in setting that budget finance minimums, the state inmates, did you say 70 or 80 for it? What'd you say?
Sheriff isn't knocking 70s and 80s.
State inmates.
State inmates.
And so, did I understand right, that we just break even, we don't, we don't make any money out of the state employees, so if that's the case, then maybe we don't need the state inmates here, we just need to use it for our own judicial system. We've got 50% of those 400 something out there that are in there for pre-trial misdemeanors. That is ridiculous, that our jail is being booked up for such, in the big picture, petty crimes that we as taxpayers are having to pay for. This is ridiculous. Our judicial system, I know the mayor's been trying to work with the judges, the DA is part of the problem, they're just letting defense attorneys continue, 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 and it just runs up the number that are either there or standing in line to get there. And it's so lopsided, and I don't understand why we have to feed and house and medicate pre-trial misdemeanors that where people sit there for months, sometimes years, before trials are coming up. It's a serious problem here, but we are, we are having to pick up the pieces here, and I, I know what you're saying, Major, and I know it's gonna be a crunch on the real solid waste, but we're talking about four to six employees there. On the other hand, we're talking about a maximum number of 30 something that could go in the annex, so, you know, I'm not getting the math all the way around, and again, I say, it's not a necessity, and we are at the point where we have to make hard decisions, we have to make, if, we have to do some things, but some things we don't have to do. It will be a problem, and I know the sheriff is gonna get hit up, and he's probably the most white person in this whole room, but having said that, he wants to please everybody, and it's hard for him to tell people no, but, and that's why he doesn't want the pressure. But he's gotta step up and say no, if that's what he doesn't wanna do. But that's not our responsibility, for him to pay the bills, to worry about whether or not the sheriff has the pressure.
Well, I would be, I would be the first of all, if it was gonna cut 500, or the amount of money, if it was gonna cut that in half, yes, go right along with it. It's not gonna save you that money. You're gonna end up paying that much money by the time you pay, everything in consideration, it's not gonna save you the money.
You got the numbers on it?
I, we've got the amended budget for real solid waste, which is gonna pay a lot. It's not gonna be that.
I just.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a large sum, and that's just to keep up with what we have to do.
Well, time passes, things change, we have got to make some, you know, everybody wants, 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 we've got to make some decisions and figure out what are needs and what are wants, just, just playing.
Mark, I'll try to answer your question, this is based on my math, so, it's certainly incorrect, because I calculated it, right now, it's $14,159 bucks a year for a housing inmate, so get 400, divide that into the budget, take the rate of state, which is $39, if you say they play it today, we give that $14,350. So, we make almost $70. Do you think that's out of the paper for you?
Maybe $70.
$70.
Y'all, y'all, really.
What he's saying is, you know, if we don't have state, state inmates, then we can handle this overload that the judicial system is wearing us up, you know, I mean.
For the 80 inmates, the 2, the $1.2 billion that we have budgeted as revenue from the state, if those 80 inmates walked out the door tomorrow, the only cost you would save is food, unless, yeah.
We're gonna fill it back up.
And then we'll just fill it back up. By keeping it in there, maybe we're not gonna fill it. At least we'll have $40 a day, we'll have $1.2 billion coming into the county. The variable cost, and again, I don't wanna sound like an accountant, but the variable cost for those state inmates is probably somewhere around $10 a day. So, they're contributing probably $30 a day in going against the fixed cost of running to jail, because those fixed costs are gonna be there whether those state inmates are or not. So, I could, we could put it this way, if we didn't have one local inmate, we had 400 state inmates, we'd be making money off the darn jail. So, if we wanted to have a, if we wanted to create a motel for state inmates, we should do so.
I would like to apprise our commission that I have had a second meeting now, session, with our judges, DA, public defender, sheriff's department personnel, and some others, appropriate parties, asking tough questions to them, asking as to why, and I represented, represented budget finance last week, which I appreciate, asking some tough questions as to why is our, and people on our citizen don't know this, but there's a national incarceration rate for 1,000 citizens. The national rate is 2.29 citizens per 1,000 population. The rate in our facility is over three times that. I'm asking the judges and whatever, why has that been, that I researched that, gone back for years, that rate is constantly going up, why? For the sake of our taxpayers in this county, we deserve some answers. Why, what is it in your system? Is it probation, whatever? And I've asked the C-TAS jail specialist with 40 years' experience, we are, we're counting, uh, uh, he's coming to do a research project here in the county, hopefully about to be your first officer. I've asked him to look at every operation, every department, are we setting bonds too high? What is it about our system, why we are three times the national incarceration rate? For our taxpayers, we deserve some answers, and I'm asking, and I had the second meeting last week, it's a tough meeting, a lot of give and take, and back and forth, and whatever, but it's time we started asking some tough questions, and that's what I've been able to take into them, trying to get down that our pre-trial misdemeanor rate is almost half of our public population. The state average is 17%, basically against our level. Why is our rate so high? Does it, does it have to do with the way the judges are interpreting things and sentencing the dead? I'm not, I'm trying to get some answers, because people deserve some answers to that. So, I just want to apprise our commission and the public here today that we are asking some tough questions, and expect some answers.
Have we considered ankle monitoring, the brachial?
That was discussed some in the meeting last week.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just saying that the ones that are in the, we've got trustees that, that, well, that's a very expensive operation, the, 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 for them, but, but if we've got trustees at there, I think it's worth enough to, to, to break this monitoring and living homeless, that's what I'm saying, and we can back into the county that way, if we don't have a roadie left, and I think there's, there's much to be done. If you keep the lives back in order, back together, families back together, that's reasonable.
We're asking some tough questions with this whole process, and I know the subject was a first meeting about someone that was incarcerated and being behind on child support. And I asked the question, nobody's trying to solve a crime, and I understand it, but we're a big defender, they need to spend some time there, but I asked the judge and all the system there today, as to, if you lock in a person up because they can't, you know, let me get this, if you lock them up, they sure can't work to try to make child support. So, a lot of tough questions are being asked. It's time to expand, because our taxpayers want to pay the bill. And then there were other supporters, but it's time to, the system being looked at and ask questions when all this.
Mr. Mayor, I gotta ask one question. Resilience, 28, 29 to appropriation for funding, for my words, my lectures. We approve, it's on the floor, right, if we approve this, we have to raise taxes, is that correct?
Yeah, 8 cents.
Yes, 8 cents.
I don't think anybody here wants to raise taxes.
I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes.
So, I would make an official amendment to the resolution to close the annex.
You have a second, Mr. Mayor. Do a motion to, the annex, and I would suggest we just say temporary suspension of operations in it, probably can't be old yet, if the county wants to do that. Right there, with recent, we can get the local numbers down with whatever report from Mr. Hart, with C-TAS comes out with, jail specialists, and with the process we're working right now, with the judge and whatever, if we can get some answers, we begin to reduce our local population count, that's, that's the direction we're trying to go here. Why is our local population so high? We've got to estimate, well, I've compared with other counties, you can't wait how high it is for some of the counties. What are we doing differently? It's been, it's a process that's been going on for years and years and years, it's time to ask some answers. So, do you have a motion?
Sheriff, what's the jail population due?
There was a three credit, three men, with, or, used to hang a bag. I think we've got eleven that's considered a, 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 which means, uh, very, sometimes we have, or in another facility, plenty. good, sometimes very bad, or in another facility, plenty of them.
Also, I've, I've heard that if we do close the annex down, then we cannot reopen it. Can you give me any information on it?
We can reopen it.
We would have to go back to the fire mortars, TCI.
So, so what do you have?
My question is, I know the fire situation was being monitored by corrections officers, which has affected us in our storage, monitor labs, and, uh, that's just something.
Excuse me, we must have a second before we have the special amendment.
I will say.
Have a second, Commissioner, right now, if we have some discussion.
Is it going to cost the city and the county to hire those workers to replace or close the annex?
Well, I would mention this, that, and I've talked with Sheriff before, TCI and C Task jail specialists has said that we can, and jails, counties across the state, many of them are operating a work program out of the main jail. And across state, I just want to put that on the table.
So now you're not, right?
Question, Sheriff, if thirty workhouse inmates move up there tomorrow, what will be your next move?
I'll have to get that space, uh, contact the state and try to get state inmates there.
So thirty state inmates would leave, and that works out to four hundred and thirty thousand dollars on an annual basis for thirty state inmates.
I've got the ones involved or laid, and I can, just leave them on the floor.
Well, I mean, again, this is part of the analysis. What, you know, you, when you say push the string here, but you'll, you'll save some of that five hundred thousand workhouse, but we lose four hundred thousand dollars of revenue, not counting what might happen to rural solid ways. This, I mean, I certainly wish we could put them all in the main workhouse, work them out of the main jail. That would be, and still keep the state inmates just drinking a little bit. But that's, that's, but if we can't, we're not saving any, we're not going to be reducing the property tax rates by this move, because we're going to take, we're going to have to take four hundred and thirty thousand of revenue right off the top for the five hundred thousand dollars of expenses we're saving.
Oh, one more thing I'd like to, I mean, thought in my mind about the, we've got the trustees, we could, all the, to use break, break those monitoring systems, like kind of monitoring systems, those guys would go home, that bunch, set them up, and make them responsible for coming back, you know, to, to work or whatever, and trustee doctors would be. And if on another level, say, we can bail down it, you can move up to the trustees, to that, to the, uh, the facility down there, and, and lower the population overall as a check. You've got the other trustees that need to qualify to be a trustee, you can move them down there, and lower your bid with, with main there. Okay. If you sent the ones that are in the, the trustees that are in the, uh, the annex, send them home with bracing monitoring systems.
Well, I can't do that, I agree, they're not.
But on this one thing, though, we, we can, we can all work out, work this thing together. But we can have all of them working together, lower the, lower the jail population, and that, that, I'm glad you got, that, that, figure out something. But I'm just saying, if you could get those guys, thirty trustworth, and, uh, send them home with bracing monitoring systems, and, uh, and then, like, you've got thirty-four down there that would move to this level, I don't know, it sounds like we've got a lot of misdemeanor fraud.
I think that's wrong.
For what? On sentence.
What does that mean to you?
That means that we're not, that you pay, that we're not allowed to work.
And some of those things, we have to get.
So our judicial system is...
It's part of the reason I think we're trying to find out, to get the system to be that, so we get people in and out. I'm, Jackie, you've got good ideas, but it's judges that are doing it, I mean, Sheriff, let the turn of lights on. You know, two, three months ago, we were breached by the DA, by now, all this stuff's going on, he needs to give a break too, and I'm not saying being soft on crime, but if you're in there for a misdemeanor, and it's your first time in Coffin County, and you live here, maybe you ought to be, be released on your own recognizance, and that's not being soft, now that you're saying your third time, yeah, you stay. But a lot of those people get put in there, and it rotates sixty, sixty days or so, because their lawyer puts it off, and the DA puts it off, and the lawyer puts it off, and then you've got ninety days, and we're paid for that. It ought to be, it ought to be, and I'll have to give the mayor credit, he's tried, but one judge has not even been to the meeting, and that's what the people are being upset by big time is, this is eating us alive. We're four hundred, we built that jail five years ago, and they can have it last ten years. And Bob Bass was right, when you build it, they will come, but so many people can be let out, and they need to be let out, and the judges need to take a little bit of responsibility for it too. They don't sit there and raise people's taxes. They put people in jail because they ran being tough on crime. They can make some compromises. And Ms. Gunn, you'll back off of your first section, I'd like to make a motion or ask her something. When you did those figures at the four percent, two percent, one percent, did you bring us down to the two point point if you took three hundred out?
I'll back off, mother.
I won't be here in July, so I want to settle tonight, somehow, or try to fix this. There's no way to really fix this, because not enough coming in is going out.
We'll wait for all this.
I would put this on the floor, that's what, just freaking recommended, that that's what we do this budget, one percent, two percent, four percent.
I'm seconding it.
Hold on. You've, you've got an amendment that you made, are you withdrawing that amendment?
I'll see that, and, uh, Mr. Morris is...
Mr. Bob, are you on the table withdrawing the amendment on the workhouses?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Morris, you can move forward, if you're, you're in.
I make that as a form of a motion.
I'll say.
Will you explain that?
It was any department that has, again, an operating department, that means they have personnel that has a budget of five hundred thousand dollars or less, their budget would be reduced one percent. The calculation of that is fifty-seven thousand savings. There's only a couple departments that have over five hundred, less than a million, but those would be reduced by two percent, that's fifty-two thousand in savings. For departments that have over a million in operation, four percent, and that's four hundred and thirteen thousand, so that's five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars plus the lowering the fund balance by three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, that gives us eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, and our tax increase is eight hundred and eleven thousand, so we're actually forty thousand dollars debt.
We won't reuse the fund balance of what they don't have.
What'd you mean by the tax increase of eight?
No tax, no tax increase, is that what you're saying?
That accounts for eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is...
You're saying, you're saying there may be no tax increase with this motion, right?
Correct.
One, two, and four.
And it's five hundred, roughly five hundred and seventy thousand.
Five hundred, yeah, roughly five hundred and twenty-two, yeah. Here we go.
Drop the fund balance by three hundred thousand.
Drop the fund balance down to... Yeah, two million, twenty-five thousand.
Excuse me, we have a second on the motion. Second, my Diana didn't say that, okay, we didn't, so we can discuss this, so we have a second. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, my concern in doing that is, we've got to go back to what everyone that's out here was complaining about. We're going to lose another hundred thousand dollars, or fifty thousand at least, or maybe a hundred thousand when the conference center comes in at the end of the year and wants the rest of their expenses. And if we have really anything, any hiccup with, with jail medical or, you can imagine, Skills, Skills has done such a good job of managing their budget, I commend him for it, but, but there's so many risks out there, the three hundred thousand dollars to be still, that worries me. I mean, it's not that I want to support doing this, but I'm not going to be here in the next commission, but that is sure pushing them against the law, I think.
Mr. Terry, I, yeah, Terry, again, when, when she closes out the county at the end of June, and I, and I know, it's almost like saying we're going to have extra conference center calls, but have extra medical calls. County also ends up having things going the right way, uh, extra revenues coming in from unexpected sources, with Arianna closes the closes, scrapes all of the accounts clean, I'm hoping she's going to find a few extra dollars so that fund balance won't be so tight.
I hope when the conference center comes back, all that extra money, that this new commission will say no.
Well, we can go on record to correct, not send the checks to bingo and give her that full support. We can do that anytime.
I think the commission, Charles, will do that.
What was that? I didn't understand that conversation. Tim Stelfield, what were you talking, what checks? What were you talking about, what checks?
They did nothing.
I was going, that said, I hope when the conference comes back, send the new money, that we just, that, I hope that new commission says, we're not giving you more, that we're done.
Commissioner Jones.
Sheriff, I just wanted, someone in the audience was raising their hand, said, I think they had something they wanted to say, I was wondering if they could go ahead and speak now, since we're talking about the debate.
Good on the gentle sports, would have to improve so we can, we can have public comments at the end, but we can't do that.
Rush, remind them that there is public comment at the end.
Yes, we do have the time for public comments at the end. Rush, have you, have you ever made the motions in second, if I think the end was Major? Diane, I wish you would consider adding, Mr. Morris, a suggestion of freezing for the year, so that you go into the following year a little better off.
I'll do that.
That's his motion.
So you made the motion? Diane, we're seconding that, that that motion be immediate to add hiring freeze going forward, except for emergency personnel situations. Ready to move.
I will agree to that.
You agree to that, okay. Hey, Bishop, I appreciate your making some tough calls, it's time we got to handle business, and I appreciate the tough calls, tough discussion, our call of the weekend, whatever. I want to have the taxes raised.
Mr. Rush, I can help you, Rush, your master's director.
Husky. If I can, turn to Husky.
I know that we've just given some critical issues for people that are retiring, I know, I don't know if there's a place to get, there are two in the trustees' office, I know they're retiring for thirty-four years, and, and that would, if you didn't replace those, that would, that's, that's about...
We got to collect the taxes.
Huh.
We're working it.
Oh, okay. I just...
We're going to have to, we're going to have to...
I don't know, that's why I asked.
Have you not rehired someone, Mark Son?
Got one, one to go.
Clarification, because if that amendment passes, I think the approval for the more hiring or replacement needs to be at a committee level, not at a full commission level, so I don't know.
And I would refer that to budget finance, because they're going to be able to see the budget, who's going to sleep in each office, and that way they can come before them and present their names, kind of people, people see, what's going on, and I think budget finance will play the right role.
Can you end it?
Yes, I can, it's a friendly amendment, too.
Well, I'm with it. Now that we know what we're talking about.
Any deviations from that was the other question.
So, would you restate your amendment immediately?
Yes. To cut the budget by the percentages given by Mr. Bruce, to institute a hiring freeze, except for non-emergency personnel, and hiring freeze to be overseen, except for emergencies.
Of course.
No, I agree with that. And then, for the hiring freeze to be overseen or, I guess, managed by the budget finance committee, and instead of receiving two point one million, and establish a fund balance of two point one million dollars.
Two point one, two five.
I'll say.
Oh, that's a verb, and she has all that now. So you, you're okay with that, okay. Any further discussion?
Clarification, Mayor, it's this all based upon a certified attachment.
Correct. It will keep us at the certified, yes, sir, what's the name's name?
I, I guess...
Commissioner, break it.
Those reductions by department forces, the decision of what line items within those departments would be made by that supervisor or officer, like, so they just would, we're just saying that their budget would be reduced, they can figure out and tell Marianna what line items they would have that funding to be reduced from.
And this is general fund, whole mail.
Mr. Chairman, what? Yes, sir.
Uh, Marianna, in regard to the deficit amount, and we're using that eight point two four cents right now on the tax rate proposed, the penny will be generating how much of this budget? Hundred and thirteen thousand, so that amount should be nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty. That's, you know, spending off of the eight point two four cents that's proposed here, that amount based on current penny in the budget should be about nine hundred and thirty-one one twenty.
Well, I think the issue is, and again, if you look at the revenue, the difference, and I think it's because of the, how the reassessment property tax works, but if you look at the two budgets, that's, that's where I got the eight hundred and eleven thousand is, is not eight six seven number of teeth, but Marianna, help me out here, if you look at the difference in the certified rate and the non-certified rate, the difference in that revenue is at eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. The ten million nine ten versus...
Yes, that's correct. When we, we got new assessment, and the certified tax rate in the general fund will bring ten million ninety-nine thousand six twenty-four, versus the eight point two four increase brings it to ten million nine hundred and ten thousand seven seven nine. And I think I confused... And I think I confused Bobby. The revenue per added penny is 111,270. But because we have that tax freeze, that's what you have to use for revenue generation. Then when you add back in the tax freeze, the revenue per penny becomes 113,000. Always have to back out for tax freeze, if you get rates and people are on tax rate.
So the trigger rate will be 111,270.
If you're looking at pennies, just put pennies, and up or down, it's 111,270.
Okay, did you repeat those numbers on the 10 million?
Okay, an 8.24 percent increase in the general fund is 10 million, 910,779. Going with just the certified rate, it's 10 million, 99,624. That's a difference of 811,155 dollars. Is that what you're referring to, Rush? Sorry, Bobby, did you?
That's okay. Commissioner Brink, that 4% would apply to any department over a million. What's my notes? Are we ready to vote on the latest amendment? Okay. Now, with them, no tax, no tax breaks.
Mr. Chairman, we're really salting you here. We thought, all the assets of this amendment. Okay, we will be add the certified tax rate. 258.
Correct? Correct.
Al, you know how ladies can make some. Okay, with all the various addresses that the amendment here will be at 258 certified tax rate. Correct? Okay, as far as this, we made growth. I know that's significant. And the lower the estimated growth, say projected, you know, it would force the certified rate to go in impact. So I hope we're estimating, we're estimating on the safe side. Because that estimate on the growth, definitely, the certified rate is based on that growth estimate. And if it goes in the wrong direction, you know, certified rate will hurt us down throughout the process. And our total tax base assessment is about 1,130,000. 1,130,000, 921,000, brother. Is like our total tax base assessment. So as far as this, again, we have an excess of 1,000,000 dollars in total assessments to be placed in this.
One more time, any further discussion?
And if anybody has a better idea, go for it.
I'm certain that includes no tax rate, or no tax breaks. Calling for voting. All in favor of the amended amendment? Please vote. All right. As amended, as amended. Let's vote, please.
You're voting on Mr. Morrison's?
Yes, amended.
Well, the amendment.
So now, voting on the amendment, okay. Let's vote, please. Voting on the amendment.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
Any? Any, yes. And we hope the motion as amended, back up for discussion. Let's vote, please. Give me any second.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, we're voting, basically, at this point in time, we're voting to approve the Resolution 2019-22.
That's correct.
Proposition of various funds as amended.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're voting on.
Yes, sir. Ready to vote.
Which will result in a certified tax rate.
Say you want more change to their vote? I think yes. Okay, thank you.
10F, Resolution 2019-23. Resolution setting the tax levy in Copy County Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
So, Mr. Chairman, second.
Why don't you try to wait to state what the tax rate is?
I'm going to put the tax rate.
That's the, fifth order, power blade, one nine, and certified tax.
People five eight one nine. I think Mr. Kelly seconded motion. Discussion. Sir.
That eliminates the proposed rate.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly, I guess what you refer to as tables, like the uniform Manchester rule. Yes, sir. And industrial part, what I have on the uniform rate that will be countywide, across the board, the general fund unified tax rate will be 2.5819. The rule rate will be 2.9324. Industrial part, 3.1860. And I, what is the Manchester?
26481.
Was that 26481? $2.64. And these rates are basically per one hundred dollars to assess that. I think it's a confusing calculation. And I think what was emphasized by the mayor, and hopefully people will understand, that you'd have to be ready at the average for this unified rate to reduce the same dollar tax payment as last year. And as we already say, you go out a lot of properties that the actual dollar amount will be more. What was paid last year, even though we're at the unified tax rate, cost that is very good point average for home camp.
You can feel like you should invest wisely, you've got something that's going up your bag and it's in your hand.
Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. Seventeen, yes, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner.
DMG Audit Committee report. I should have this tonight, enter seat tonight.
You have that in front of you, enter seat. Commissioner Cunningham serves on the audit committee, all returns on per forty dollars.
Just need a motion.
Yes, we need, we need a motion to approve the committee report. And motion to approve.
Hold move.
So move back, Commissioner, thank you. Second by, discussion.
Okay, as you can all read, the audit committee, we only had one finding, and it was in the offices of the circuit park, and which included the juvenile sessions and juvenile court clerk. She is a program, a computer program that doesn't work as the rest of the state works, but it's efficient, but, but it does leave out a couple of things that the auditors recognize there. So she did argue, came back and argued with the auditors about that. She didn't argue, she was just following protests or some speak about her records compared to what the auditors have found. But at the end of the day, the audit had been written, and she did not question that when she signed it. So she's going to, she's correcting these things, that even though she's been written up every year for the same problem, she has reduced the amount of money each year that they're in difference about. So she's, she is working to correct that part. And so hopefully next year, we won't have any audit findings, which would be amazing. Because we've come a long way since a few years back on the audit. And then the final one, Maryanna just noted to the audit committee, because the auditors were in there, that the Wayside Acres audit is separate from the county. So Wayside, Waste Water pays for their own audit, and the state auditors are going to do that audit. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? If not, let's vote, please. And as Commissioner Cunningham said, we've come a long way towards getting our findings now. Now, this is the only, the only, the only part of the county.
And I would reinforce what Mark said about the school system. Several years ago, we had tons of audit findings with them, but they are doing a great job with their accounting process. And as a commissioner, I really appreciate what the school system is doing.
TNH, I mean, little solid white ledger.
That was just in case.
No, whoa, 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 Mayor. Can I ask Mr. Morrison, since I didn't make an agenda amendment, can I use one of your H's or I's?
I can flow over to you, sir.
Well, what I would like, because we have our next scheduled commission date, July the 11th, we have a holiday week busted open wonderfully, 4th of July, which is going to, apart from budget issues, it would, I think, serve this body better if we changed the calendar and moved our July 11th meeting either to the 18th or the 24th of July. One, to allow Maryanna to close the books, come back and with good budget numbers, because she won't be able to do that by our July 11th meeting. So I would.
I thought we just passed the budget.
I understand. I would like to see how the funds are out, and the mothers are out, and so.
Okay, now, that won't be till August.
You, what do you have?
No, that won't happen until August. I'm telling you right now.
Well, move the July meeting to August.
I don't want to be. I will give you more information than you need and plan when it's all done.
Yeah, we're not scheduling meeting until, that's the last meeting, right? And I just think, I, well, the 10th. I just think when you've done a certain meeting after, I don't care if it isn't August. I was thinking.
Make a motion to move August 14.
That would be fun, I know you guys. And then reschedule to the second Tuesday in August.
14, August.
Mr. Head, go, just wait your man.
Since the, since the commission set the dates in the January meeting, of course, that's been set party rules. To do this exactly for five year procedure, protect a couple of states. If the commission wants to do this and is agreeing to this, you make a motion for whatever time you want, and if section voted on it, if it will pass with a two-thirds vote, that could eliminate one step. That would eliminate having to suspend the rules, vote on that, and have you come back and if you did this with a two-thirds vote.
Well, I make a motion to amend the calendar that was set, to change our July 10th meeting. That's correct. To August the 14th.
So motion is second to suspend the July meeting, moving the establishing August the 14th for that meeting. And we have a second. I think, well, we got a second by Mr. Morrison. We might take a third. Okay, discussion. Discussion only motion. Motion being to suspend July, July 14th. Has to pass by two-thirds.
Just for clarification, the election is the second, so, but it would still be this group of commissioners, because they, they'll be on the way down until September.
Any other discussion? Count as vote, please. Must have a two-third vote to pass.
So we're not going to have a meeting in July?
That is correct, if the motion passes. Warren Walker, Mr. Walker. Motion passes, then we're not meeting in July, maybe August the 14th.
Our reports standing committees, budget finance.
Probably not. One item that budget finance, and yet I just made aware of that today, and I hate to bring you this, this is harbor of intention, but our nine-one-one agreement expired at the end of June. So, we need to be working the details out for that.
We've already done that, and I give it to the mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Captain Wylie?
We need to leave this month, but we, Robert made it through the year on going over budget. Air conditioners are holding right now, bridge is that well. River Library don't have the features, so.
Um, law enforcement? Okay, um, HWR? Yeah. Personnel compensation?
I'll confirm that catch for our meeting.
Yes.
Two is scheduled, so another meeting will be announced.
Legislative committee?
No report this time. We'll be meeting the fourth Monday next month.
Number eleven, statements and announcement of the commission.
I've got a question. Andy, did you get all the paperwork for the emergency generator?
We have the generator, yes.
So. Okay, but you do get it purchased, then? Yes, that and that's how this year. But then, the purchase or the installation, we still have to see if we can find the money to do that. Or get you the paperwork to do it. I'll make a call a little bit later. The second, the second thing, Mr. Mayor, when you're meeting with the judges and the other folks, is I understand that if somebody has an appearance summons issued to them and there's a failure to appear, then that becomes a force offense. It goes from a misdemeanor to a felony type offense, which creates a whole new thing. In today's world, people like me get a lot of notices by my cellphone that says it's a text message. You got a doctor's appointment tomorrow. It seems like we could buy a system like that in the judicial that would be able to be used to notify the people. And I say that because I always pick my favorite ad on television, the one that says, look, you can get free electricity. There's forty million free cellphones already given out. There's forty-three million more available. So, evidently, everybody in the country has a cellphone, whether they pay for it or they don't. They get text messages free. So, we ought to piggyback on that somehow and get those people reminded a couple, three times so that they know to show up and we don't have that as a problem. I hope that we would do that. And the, the final thing is really, I'm going to pat myself on the back. I was named an A D C fellow this week. And I think that is a great honor and.
The only.
I understand that we're requested to cut four percent, but I'm not sure which budget I'm supposed to cut four percent of. Because I turned it to forty-one. So, is it the last one that with the changes to, for things to go to the drug fund, which gives the corrections to deputies thirty-five cent increase or a little step raise? Is it the original budget we proposed? I'm not sure which budget you're looking at. I realize that I like to cut them, but I'm not sure which one I'm cutting.
Well, Mariana, whatever copy of the budget that we were funding balances would have been part of that.
So.
So, the jail, Sheriff's Department, two point nine million. Of course, the budget that two million, nine hundred forty-six thousand for the sheriff, five million, six hundred thirty-seven thousand for the jail. At clarity purposes, I'm looking to buy the jail and courthouse together.
All right, thank you.
Okay, time for public comments. Chairman, recognize me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I realize the amended budget that you all voted, thank you for not raising the taxes, we appreciate that. However, that's, that's kind of a temporary thing. I did try and speak up, thank you, Stephen, for asking the chair for that. There are smarter ways that we can do business as a county going forward in the future. The annex was brought up to be shut down. The mayor said we can suspend operations for that and reopen it. I think that going on in the future, whoever's sitting in your chair is coming next year after the election. We need to look at, yes, close that annex down, move the trusty workers over into the main jail where they're supposed to be. Work them out of the main jail. There is a protection issue that the sheriff is concerned about. They can have their own space. Those misdemeanor offenses that have been sentenced, if they are in for different, whatever level misdemeanors and are considered not a threat to the public, they can be worked out of the annex and they work from this facility. They can pay their own rent, they can pay for their own food, and they can go ahead and go to work. The child support inmates that are there, they're not able to be paying for their children. We're compounding the problem. DUI force defense, are they really that big of a threat to society that they need to be locked up? Drug offenders, yeah. They're drug addicts. They're not going to come after you before I, all right? They need rehabilitation, they need treatment. Those types of things, we need to look at as a community going forward because these are our, our people. These are our family. These are our friends, these are our neighbors. These are people we know. Okay, we need to look at that as a community as a whole going forward. Now, the conference, that was a big issue prior to the meeting and I showed up kind of in the middle and I didn't get a chance to be on. That is a business. If it is a government subsidized, it's not running my business at a hundred thousand dollars loss per year. Guess we're out of beat. The IRS would probably have me in handcuffs, number one. And I'll be in the IRS. Okay, so, we need to look at that as a business because a management issue, if there's something we can fire through management and we put somebody in there that's going to pay that amount of debt money, we need to look to do that. I remember Commissioner Jones spoke up, I said, two, three years ago, there was actually companies looking to do that. We need to look at maybe that possibility in the future. I don't know what the contract says, but these are ideas. We need to think about as a community because the fix that we have today on not raising property taxes, that's just, just kind of passing the hole. Where we're at.
Thank you, Richard. Different people have lost over time. What was our commission that Alderman thinking seventeen, eighteen years ago when they contracted that? But that's been here for that now. What a mess. Other comments? One more. No comments? It's your time. Appreciate the audience being here tonight. But we appreciate your concern, your suggestions, your recommendations, and yes, we've got to look at a lot of things going under the roof, I agree. Any other discussion? Finally, your turn.